Good evening, everyone. I better try that one more time. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very well.
We are so elated to see all of you here tonight. Thank you, and thank you, because this is a history-making situation, and everybody wants to be a part of history. Is that not correct? Right, thank you. The council will now come to order. We're going to stand for the invitation. And for the plaque.
Goodness, sir. Our first and foremost, we give thanks to this day. Continue to guide this council and the council to come on in January. But be without a new mayor as he take leave today. Also, this man is leaving. And thank all that have given the city a dozen. Keep us together. We pray this bring you to be his name.
Good evening. What of the regions to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to begin our council meeting tonight. I'm reviewing just what we did from the agenda, and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Spikes that he would come and introduce the new council, let some attenders tonight, and let them introduce themselves however y'all wanna have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Mr. Spikes. I'm the new programs, youth programs director here at the City of Dublin. Not only do I do youth council, but I also am the executive director of Team Court, working with the students here. But tonight, I'm here to introduce our youth council. Youth council, will you all please stand?
Your new mayor is right there. Mayor, you can step out just a little bit. So you can see all your youth council.
Also, right. Also, Mrs. Darius Knight, who is our mayor, is going to come up. He's going to introduce everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Darius Knight. I'm this year's 2021-2022 youth council mayor. This is my second year on youth council, and I'm here to introduce everyone. First up, we have Xavier Morgan.
Raise your hand, aye. There you go.
Then we have Jonathan Towns. Emily Collier. Carly, Carly Gay. Britt Kelly. Shaleah Parks. Corythea Charleston. Paris White. Jelaine, Jelaine Burner. Smees. Tuesday Curtis. Arianna Hill. Kate Kobe. Mitchell McDaniel. Arianna McCray. And is that anyone else? Oh, yeah. We have Carson, Carson Lee. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Also, we have an amazing youth commission. Can the commission please stand as well? The council commission. We have Mrs. Tammy Howard, who is on board. Ms. Olivia Eason, Ms. Regina McDaniel, Ms. Artipity Stanley, who is not here, Mr. Royce Hall, and also Councilman Billy Jones, and Councilman Smith also works with us as well. So we are ready for the blazing gear. And if you all see me coming knocking at your door, just help us out. Thank you.
One more thing. Can you tell us the schools that are represented?
Yes, ma'am. All schools in Dublin are represented. West Lawrence, East Lawrence, Trinity, and Dublin City are all represented here. I think we have all, all schools directed. All schools from each school, I mean, all students from each school are represented in the council.
All right. We're down to the agenda. Approval of November 4th, 2021, city council meeting minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Benny Jones and seconded by Councilman Chris Smith that the, that may be approved. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's by the same sign. The ayes have it. Approval of bills over $3,000.
Make motion to pay bills, mayor.
It's been motioned by Councilman Curtis Edwards and seconded by Councilman Reed that we pay the bills over $3,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's by the same sign. The ayes have it. Item three, approval of purchases over $3,000.
No purchases.
No purchases. All right, thank you so very much. Item four, report from election superintendent or certified election results. Ms. Burke Heather.
Mayor and council, I'm happy to report that the election has been certified. I would like to read the results just for my minutes so I can have a record. So I'll do that now. For city council at large, we have Sarah Colby with 1,743 votes, Ted Scottree, 1,605 votes, Richard Nascarra, 1,459 votes, Albert Brown Jr., 1,276 votes, and Brandon Chain, 1,239 votes. School board at large, we have Nelson Carswell with 1,955 votes, Shadrina, Shadrina Pammersham, 997 votes. For our school board superdistrict one, we have Kenny Walters, who was unopposed with 942 votes. For our school board superdistrict two, we have John Dale, who was also unopposed with 1,678 votes. And for the mayor race, which was a special election, we have Joshua E. Kite with 1,737 votes, and Jerry Davis with 1,348 votes. So that is the complete and official results.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Brown. Chair, we entertain a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept.
Basically, we had, didn't we?
Do we have?
Thought we had, we did.
You don't have to.
Well, I second, I second.
It's been properly moved by Curtis, Councilman Curtis Edwards and seconded by Councilman Bill Brown to accept the report in terms of certifying the election. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's by the same sign. The ayes have it.
The city of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today.
Here at Stepping Zone, you are never alone. If you or someone you know has been a victim of child abuse, please call our fully confidential crisis number at 478-595-8339.
Okay, we're down to the most important item. And before we get to that item, there are a couple of things that I would like to say. I want to give special thanks to Ballmer Mayor Fitzpatrick and the current city council representatives for appointing me interim mayor for the last five months, from July the 1st until today, November the 18th. I've enjoyed serving as mayor. Congratulations to the newly-elected Joshua Pike and the three newly-elected council representatives, Ms. Scottree, Ms. Kobe, and Mr. Rich. Remember, you are representing all the citizens of Dublin. The decisions you make affect the whole city. Special thanks to the city staff, Lance Jones, Josh Power, Felicia Erin, Heather Brownie, and Matthew Bradshaw, Dwayne Riff, and Royce Hall, and all those persons sitting down front. Well, normally, you can sit down front, but y'all sitting in the back. Wherever you get, they get inside, in the door, out the door. Nine yes. But I want to thank everybody for your help in making the interim mayor job easy. And forgive me for calling names, just in case I didn't call your name. It was, I was just trying to get those people there and stay on my back. We're continuing to work on the development of Gary Johnson's Park, and hopefully, it will be completed by the end of the year. The Hugdunkie Park, hopefully, will be completed by the year 2022. Special thanks to the Dublin-Luance County Recreation Authority for meeting with me and the members of the Pickleball Association. Ms. Eva Martin, Ms. Marcia Dixon, along with city manager Lance Jones, met with the Recreation Department to get the pickleball lighting in the Hillen Park and to get it incorporated into the Dublin-Luance Recreation Authority agenda, whereby pickleball courts are established at Southern Pines. Hopefully, before the year 2024. I informed them that we are senior citizens, and we may not be around 2024. It is too long to wait for a pickleball court at Southern Pines. And I encourage Lance Jones to meet with Brian Rogers to get, by next week, to discuss whether he can establish a pickleball court before 2024. We encourage the city staff to address employee complaints so as to develop a better working relationship with all employees. We also encourage the city council to develop a race relations committee to address our racial issues and improve our city's togetherness, all for one and one for all. I met with Mr. and Mrs. Smith, along with Ms. Todd of the Salvation Army, who informed us we, the council, needed to take steps to help the homeless situation in Dublin. We have over 100 persons that are in need of help. The next meeting with this group is scheduled for December the 3rd at 9:00 a.m. in City Hall. Persons interested in helping with the homelessness, please come to this meeting, December the 3rd, 9:00 a.m. Thanks to the staff for placing picnic tables at Cross the Creek Cemetery. A lot of persons go there to enjoy solitude. I've been there myself since I've been council. I've been on mayor. We have to go get peace. So I've been, I've been across the creek, said a couple of times. Thanks to the youth council for being here tonight. We congratulate Mr. Trey Spikes for being recently set in the position of becoming the youth coordinator. And we want to congratulate him for that, being the youth director. I encourage the city council representatives to continue giving a listening ear to the citizens and to make Dublin the greatest city in the state of Georgia and the nation. Always remember, it's never about you. Move seven out of the way. It's always about the citizens of Dublin, whom you represent. Thanks again for your support. May God bless each and every one of you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you so very, very much. I appreciate that. Now we're down to item five. Oath of office. Thank you, Judge Gillis, for being here to handle this case. We sincerely appreciate. Come right forward.
All right, thank you. Will you please have your quiet, your family come up here? Your body. Let Ken hold it up and make sure right hand. I, Joshua E. Kite.
I, Joshua E. Kite.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Form the duties of mayor.
Form the duties of mayor.
Of the city of Dublin.
Of the city of Dublin.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
And as to me.
And as to me.
Shall seem to be.
Shall seem to be.
For the best interest.
For the best interest.
And welfare of the city.
And welfare of the city.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor or affection.
Favor or affection.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The constitutions of the state of Georgia.
The constitutions of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust.
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited.
Which I am prohibited.
From holding by the laws.
From holding by the laws.
Of the state of Georgia.
Of the state of Georgia.
That I am not the holder.
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted for.
Of any unaccounted for.
Public money.
Public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
That I have been a resident of the city of Dublin.
That I have been a resident of the city of Dublin.
For the time required.
For the time required.
Of constitution.
By the constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold.
That I am otherwise qualified to hold.
This office by the constitution.
This office by the constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Dublin.
And ordinances of the city of Dublin.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And council members. While I think that Judge Brigger, excuse me, just mayor Brigger, has given us a splendid example of service to this community. It is certainly a role that I think, Joshua, you should try to follow, as well as those mayors who have preceded Mayor Brigger. And I think you'll do a wonderful job. And mayor, I present to you your new mayor. He is now David Swor.
If you'll come forward, mayor, please. I present to you with this gap, Beth Swish.
I'm Brian Bazemore, president and CEO of Community Bank of Dublin-Luance County. We would like to invite you to come by and experience a welcoming banking environment. Come by today and have a cup of coffee and let us talk with you about our many products. Savings accounts, checking accounts, CDs, and our many loans. You're more than just a number to us, you're family. Come by today. Community Bank of Dublin-Luance County, member FDIC and equal housing lender.
You've got miles and miles of grass to mow. So you're going to need a machine built to perform day in and day out, season after season. You're going to need a Gravely built to mow the distance.
Find your new Gravely mower at Myers Equipment and Supply, 301 North Jefferson in Dublin.
I'd like to say just a couple of words. Thank you, Judge Gillis, for the swearing-in ceremony to former Mayor Strugger and former mayor Phil Best. I think of you as friends and mentors. I appreciate your service to this community and personally, your advice and counsel. I'll probably be calling on you in the future and always appreciate your guidance. To council members, those now serving and those incoming, I look forward to working with you for the good of the community. And to the public, thank you for your trust. I pledge to work hard for safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and a strong community for all of Dublin. Now it's time to get to work. The next item on the agenda is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to annex 1.25 acres. Does that need to be read by city manager?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-14, annexing and incorporating into the municipality of the city of Dublin, Georgia, 1.25 acres, more or less, of land located at parcel D12C003 as B2, highway-oriented business zone. Proposed use is for a restaurant. We will now close the city council meeting, open a public hearing on this ordinance, and invite anyone who wants to speak in favor or against the ordinance to come forward. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? If not, is there anyone who wishes to speak against the ordinance? Hearing none, we will now close the public hearing, reopen the city council meeting, and turn it over to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion from, from Councilman Brown and a second from Councilman Edwards. I believe we need to call the roll, please.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Councilman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilman Griggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yeah.
Ordinance passes.
All right, we'll now move on to the next agenda item, the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordnances. Mr. Jones.
Ordinance number 21-15, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to amend section 6-47D of the Code of Ordnances regarding building permit fees to allow for fee waivers for demolition permits for certain blighted and dilapidated structures to clarify procedures and authority issue waivers pursuant to said section to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
This is the first reading of the ordinance. Our second reading and public hearing will be on December the 9th. We'll now move to the agenda item number eight, discussion and action on a resolution named Chester Street.
Resolution number 21-62, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to change the name of Chester Street to the name of Willie C. Burke Drive to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Now be resolved at Chester Street, which runs from Flanders Street to Robert Street in the city of Dublin. Is hereafter named Willie C. Burke Drive.
Thank you for that. Madam Court, do we need to recall the roll in a resolution?
We do.
All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Got a motion. Got a motion. Move to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Jones and a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. And the renaming ceremony of Street will be 11 o'clock Tuesday in Pritchett Street Park, if anybody'd like that to hear. Thank you for that. It's now time for citizen comments. Any citizens have any comments that they would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Warren Hall. I came in a couple of weeks ago on behalf of some of the residents at Live Oak, and I wanted to extend a thank you to city council and to Matt Bradshaw for coming out and doing the study I requested. As my understanding, that study has been completed now. And also, I wanted to add just a little bit of additional information. I understand you guys would be voting on it or are otherwise meeting on the, on the suggestions that we had for possibly a four-way stop or a roundabout. Have not asked for the speed limit to be reduced. That was a question. I don't believe, but Robert, have you got what I wanted to show? Let me grab my notes. I've gotten old here. And this was taken on Sunday, 11:14 at 3:58 p.m. by me. You can see this vehicle is moving through the intersection fairly fast. It's my understanding that the recommended speed is 35. The, to the bypass is 45. But as you can see, it's well over the speed limit, which makes it very difficult for us to get our vehicle rolling, negotiate that turn, get in and out of our idragable cross. There's been lots of close calls. Go ahead to the next one, Mr. Robert. The next one here was taken down coming through the intersection. I'm down close to the bypass. You can see the 35 zone sign there. It's a, let's say, recommendation. This one was 70.8. At the point where you see the vehicle, he's basically at the intersection. And so, this is again for you guys to consider some actual evidence on this to show you. My radar gun is certified, and I have a tuning fork that is certified at 50 miles an hour. It's within two degrees of the speed limit. So.
Go ahead, Mr. Robert.
Hit me again.
Don't hit me.
Okay. This next one, 64.4. The car came so quick, I couldn't get the camera ready. But I did get the speed, so I just pointed it at the ground so that, so that I wouldn't unwittingly name an innocent car. It was 4:46 p.m. on Thursday, last Thursday, the 11th. And it was coming from the bypass through the intersection. Again, 45, he's basically 20 miles an hour over the limit. And then... And this is, this is the biggie. I'm down towards the bypass again. I'm shooting toward the intersection. 74.3, this is the biggest one. The vehicle nearly rolled over as it came. I saw the vehicle shift. It appeared to me that it could have lost control coming through because there's a sharp curve there, if you've ever been out that way. So these, these speeds are for you guys to look at, to think about, and hopefully, we can not wait till an accident happens. Maybe we can get that four-way stop. And even if somebody said, well, you know, you know, people aren't used to it. Well, they're not used to anything. But when you can put the red lights that are solar powered to do that, this would help our local law enforcement that can't be there anymore. So it's just my request. I don't know if anyone is from the subdivision. They were invited, and one had high blood pressure and one had sugar problems. So there's some elderly people that live there.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Thank you for your comments. And I know that you've shared that information with the city staff, and they are doing further investigation into it, and they will be back in touch with you. Thank you.
That's right. They haven't made the decision. That's coming up. And thank you and congratulations, Mr. Kite.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Are there any other citizen comments?
Conservative treatment options are typically where we start with both knee and hip arthritis. So if you come in to see us and your hip is beginning to be arthritic or your knee's beginning to be arthritic, there's sort of a stepwise approach that we take. Anti-inflammatories, which are medicines like Motrin, Advil, or leave, are usually sort of first line. We have prescription forms of those medications that we can use. In our elderly population, that becomes a little more difficult because they have comorbidities, things like diabetes or stomach ulcers or disease, that they can't take those medications, even hypertension. So we'll try to treat them with medications if it's appropriate. When it's not, then we go on to things like injections. So cortisone injections are, there's these things called visco-injections or visco-supplements, which are lubricating-type injections that we can use to treat knee arthritis as well as hip arthritis to try to control people's pain. And a lot of times, we do that for years for people before they get to the point where those are no longer working and we're ready to talk about knee or hip replacement.
My name is Phil Patel. I am one of the part owners here and the general manager here at the Hampton Inn and Suites. First time when I got introduced to Morris Bank, the people were so friendly and helpful. You feel like that you are appreciated there. At Morris Bank, everybody down at the bank is so friendly, and not just to myself. They're just friendly to everybody. They want us to succeed because our success is their success at the same time. That makes a lot of difference, and they're always there for us.
Hearing none, then we'll move to council comments. I know there's a tradition to start with a particular council member, and I don't know where it's... All right, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kite. I sent you a notice, I think he is opening it today or whatever. But I'd like to thank you for your turn, Mr. Mayor. I know I won't be here but another month, but I wish everyone good luck. We need it. Looking forward to you all, and I know Josh is going to do a good job, and I know the mayor and council are going to do a good job together. Youth leaders, I'm looking forward to you all doing your job. I see walk off at that start, walk off years ago. Years ago. But I'd like you to say, everyone, we sure want to have a nice Thanksgiving. And be safe. If you have to cover up, cover up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
All right, I would like to just thank everyone for attending today. Some nice surprise. Good to see a nice attendance in the council chambers. To former Mayor Dricker, I want to say it was nice working with you and your name. Hopefully Josh won't get it wrong. Mr. Spikes, I want to thank you for taking that position. I've been getting the texts. I know y'all have been texting a lot in the group chat. I would look forward to coming to a meeting. Mr. Hall, thank you for coming with us as well. Everyone, just have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Councilman Griggs.
Thank you, Ms. Griggs. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Youth council and Mr. Spikes, congratulations. Look forward to working with y'all. Mr. Hall, I'd like to be proud of you. And Josh, congratulations. Look forward to working with you. Have some good things happen. And thank you, everybody, for coming. Happy Thanksgiving and safe stay.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman. Who does he get to case? Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. It's actually good to see the council chambers full and us not getting fussed out by us. First thing, I know night's not over, so I'm sure. Glad to see everyone here and invite y'all to come back. It's always good to see citizens involved, that's what we encourage. Youth council, thank you again for coming. Mr. Spikes, congratulations. As always, thank you to the Dublin Police Department for providing security and for everything that each and every city employee does day in and day out. It's great to see. Good to see the elected council members in the audience and those who have ran. It's great to see them still coming and being active as well. That's very important. You have a very important role even as a citizen, even all the councilmen. You can still get things accomplished for the city. That's what all about is about having citizens involved and to keep living this city forward. We can't do it by ourselves, you know. We can kind of try and navigate the vessel, but it takes the help of everyone to do this. So thanks again for everyone for coming. So, back there.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. And Ms. Dricker, it was an honor serving with you and a pleasure. I had the honor of replacing you on council, and I got the honor of serving with you and learning a lot. So it was an honor, and thank you for the knowledge that you inputted. I thank the new mayor, Josh. Look forward to working with you. Had conversations, and so look forward to moving forth and moving the city forward with ideas and new council members coming on. Look forward to working with y'all. Mr. Spikes and the youth council. I know y'all have been, it's been a year that's been kind of shaky with y'all, losing your direction. But now we have someone in place so y'all can get going with projects and move forward. So we look forward to hearing from y'all, working with y'all, and moving forth and finishing out this year real strong. It started out slow for y'all, but y'all get to finish with a bang and continue going and having exciting years. So don't hold your heads up and keep coming with your ideas and start coming with them, putting them out and working with y'all. And Mr. Hall, glad that you came back with your follow-up with us. That's what we need. And as Mr. Edwards said, it's nice to see the council chamber full and everyone here to enjoy themselves, and we're not getting a lot of complaints. But everyone have a safe and happy Thanksgiving and enjoy yourselves. Don't eat too much.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Mr. Brown.
Like's been said, not sure that needs necessarily repeating, but I want to thank Ms. Dricker for her service. As I stated in our last council meeting, I was privileged to sit beside you for many years, and I thank you again for your service and willingness to step forward. I too would like to congratulate Joshua Kite for his new mayor seat, and I look forward to working with you, working with you for a long time on some various other projects and look forward to this endeavor as well. Would like to thank everybody for being here. Mr. Hall, thank you for coming back. Youth council, continue to do good things. Certainly, if I can be of service to you, please don't hesitate to reach out. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and everybody be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Brownie.
Mayor Dricker, it was a pleasure working with you. And Mayor, I decided to work with you here, I mean, you know, congratulations.
Is Mr. Daniels here? Any comments, Mr. Daniels?
You don't want the money man talking. Mr. Dricker, thank you so much for serving and agreeing with her and those who are working with you, and thank you for supporting the staff during your interim term. And, Mr. Mayor, welcome aboard. Looking forward to doing great things with the city.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, Josh.
Well, I want to say again how much, what a pleasure it was to serve with Julie Dricker again. I don't know if we've ever had somebody that was city council member, county commissioner, and mayor. Well, and that just really shows the trust that community has in her. When they needed somebody, the old county commissioner, they asked her to do it, and she stepped up and did it. And same thing with the mayor. And she's not really real keen on doing it, but when her community needed her, she stood up and, as Junior Scarborough used to say, she worked me like a reading mu. She really, she works hard. When she gets a job, she works hard and takes the years, we say. Thank you very much, Julie. And welcome aboard, and we have a tradition in the meeting, love and good. Thank you.
Thank all of you for attending. This meeting is adjourned.